...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bye, would you call the roll please?
Councilmember Leaks May, here.
Martin.
Here.
Pollocka.
Here.
Deanna.
Here.
Mayor Coulter.
Here, yes, thank you, we have a quorum this evening. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. What is council's pleasure on the agenda this evening?
A move that we approve the agenda as presented, support.
Alright, moved by Martin, supported by Pollocka, any discussion on the agenda? Barb, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Deanna.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, the agenda is adopted. Moving on now to presentations, and we have three presentations this evening. The first one will be presented by our Chief of Police, the Citizen Award this evening, Chief Collins.
Thank you, Your Honor.
And make sure to use the mic, you know, you know.
Thank you, Your Honor, good evening, you're in one. Again, it's with great honor that the Ferndale Police Department gets to make these citizen recognitions. I'd like to call forward from the audience, Ms. Bernice Oliveri, who's already corrected me once on the production of the first one.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a pretty impressive thing to be able to present to you. This occurred last month, on March 8th, 2016. During the daylight hours, Ms. Bernice Oliveri was a patron at the Omega Coney Island Restaurant on Hilton Road. Ms. Oliveri observed a woman approach another patron who was paying her bill at the front counter. The woman produced a knife and began to stab the other woman in the back of the head. Ms. Oliveri left the booth, grabbed the assailant, and pulled her off the victim, ending the assault. The woman was then taken into custody by responding officers, and it was determined that the woman was having mental issues. The suspect was transported to the hospital for a mental evaluation, but without the quick and selfless action of Ms. Oliveri, the victim could have been hurt much, and much greater. Without her action, this is what it's all about, we have citizen involvement like this, and potentially could have saved someone's life, so we are very grateful for Ms. Oliveri and her actions that day. Thank you very much, ma'am.
That is impressive, thank you very much. Thanks Chief for bringing her forward, what a story. Our second one, it's hard to act to follow, but this is kind of exciting for us too, because we don't get to hire a lot of new folks in the fire department, so Chief Sullivan has some new employees to introduce, correct?
That is correct. Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm happy to introduce our two newest firefighters. Gentlemen, you come on up here. First is Kevin Kozlowski, be to the audiences right, a two-and-a-half-year veteran of the Waterford Regional Fire Department, working for Chief John Lyman, was laid off when their safety expired and was not renewed by the federal government. We're happy to have him, he's got veteran experience, and his EMS and fire skills, I hear, are exceptional. Then on his left is Matthew Nutt. Matt is a veteran, experienced of three years with Heart Medical down in Detroit, he's done special events at many of the big venues, and has an excellent paramedic history, although he's new in the firefighting world, would be willing to get him fired up and ready to go in firefighting. So ladies and gentlemen, these are the two new firefighters of the Ferndale Fire Department.
Yes.
I'll show you how well-trained they are, gentlemen, you can sit now.
Kevin and Matt, welcome, we look forward to your many years of service from you guys, thanks. Alright, our third presentation is our Downtown Development Authority, and I believe I saw Barry Hicks, are you going to give us an update on the DDA, Barry?
Yes.
Awesome.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilman. Couple of announcements from the DDA, a few things coming up. First of all, I just wanted to touch on the Artist in New 2D Student Art Reception, being hosted by the Ferndale Area Chamber of Commerce, in partnership with Ferndale Arts and Cultural Commission, the Ferndale Public Schools, and the Ferndale Area District Library. There's also several sponsors, which I don't go through right here, but they're listed on the Chamber's website if you're interested. This is Thursday this week, March 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Ferndale Area District Library, right next door here at 222 East Nine Mile Road. Why am I promoting this? Well, other than the fact it's in the DDA, in the past, I know the DDA has helped with sponsorships and been partners and everything, but due to some budgetary kind of issues this year, we weren't able to participate, but I still want to support this because it's a great event, featuring a lot of maybe up-and-coming artists from Ferndale High School, ones that may someday even be putting some public art in downtown Ferndale. So it's a great event if you're able to make it out. Another thing I wanted to touch on, speaking of the Ferndale Public Schools, recently they reached out to the DDA, they're trying to put together basically a, some kind of cafe or refreshment-type area in the school for students to study and just have a little space to kind of chill out for a second, and they were hoping, they're looking for donations of chairs, tables, stools, things of that nature that would help them put something like that together, so I know this is televised, if there's any business owners out there, restaurant owners that might be remodeling, have old supplies they'd like to get rid of or donate, it'd be a tax write-off since you're donating it to the school, but I just wanted to push that out there, just to let everybody know. Barry, Deanna, I'm sorry to interrupt, let's do the chair, are they willing to come pick it up? I'm sure we can make arrangements, I mean, if you want to, if you have something, you can email us at theDDA@info@downtownferndale.com and let us know, and we can connect you with the right people at the school. Thanks. Yep. Also, kind of getting ahead of ourselves a little bit here, but I do want to start promoting the Third Thursdays, which start happening pretty soon here, with the bike rodeo that's coming up in May, that's going to be on May 19th. This, to my understanding, in the past was actually two separate events, where we did a bike rodeo through the Recreation Department, a Bike Night through the DDA, and I know the police and fire departments were involved with both of those, but we're combining it, putting it all into one on May 19th, and that's just one of the many things to come, more details on that soon. And also coming up on the Third Thursdays are going to be an event called Art of the Cocktail, which I think you've done in the past, which is a fundraiser we do for the DDA, and then there's a Get Real Movie Series on Investor Street, which happens on the Third Thursdays of each month, in July, August, and September. And right now, I'd just like to give a little shout-out to Kayla Kapke from our Promotions Committee, she's the volunteer that's coordinating these movies and then helping us select what's going to be showing this year, so again, more information to come soon on that, but from some preliminary conversations, I think we've got an interesting mix of movies we're looking at. The next thing I wanted to touch on was from Main Street Oakland County. Each year, Main Street Oakland County hosts an event to honor the hard workers and volunteers that participate in the Main Street programs around the county. This year's event will have an 80s theme, and it will be held on Thursday, April 28th, at the Royal Oak Music Theater. The event starts at 6:00 PM, there will be live music, cash bar, buffet dinner, and an awards presentation. If you're interested, again, you can email us at info@downtownferndale.com, we could get you signed up for that. We do have two nominees out there this year, so we'll see what happens. One of them is for the Best Sign, the Magic Bag, which I think we can all agree was a pretty nice addition to downtown recently. And then we also nominated a Volunteer of the Year, Rick Axe, who, when he is not doing his day job as an associate broker, he is working his tail off doing all kinds of great things around the community. He heads up our Business Development Committee, he's a pleasure to work with, he's certainly a worthy person, and to Melanie, I just wanted to pass along your thanks from Cindy for helping get some information together for that application. And then the DDA budget presentation, I know you have budget presentations coming up, just to give you an idea, I think what I might be doing this year will be a little bit different style, you'll see more when we go through that, but it'll look more like a state of the DDA, so to speak, rather than a straight-up line-by-line budget item kind of process. Just to give you some statistics from 2015, see where things were at, talk about their strategic planning they just went through, what they're going to be doing with that going forward, so those are the kinds of things you can expect out of that. And then finally, the DDA office move, our office space over here is ready for us to come in. I've set the deadline to be the end of April, we need to be out of the building on the other side of Woodward and into City Hall, and we've already been purging a lot of things, but we still have several items left, so I, seriously, if there's people that are looking for bookshelves, filing cabinets, just miscellaneous things like that, we might actually have a few things, because we're about to fit into a much smaller space. I know some departments, DPWs, come by and claimed a few different items, but that's good, I'd rather them go to good use for other people, since we can't take it all with us. So again, you know how to get ahold of me, if that's something of interest to you, and that's all I've got for you tonight.
Excellent. Anyone have any questions, Barry?
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you for the update. And it's not a presentation on the agenda, but I saw that our State Representative is here, Robert Wittenberg, and when he stops by, we'd like to give him an opportunity to tell us what's the good word in Lansing, or bad word in Lansing, depending on the day of the week.
I don't use the bad word that I use often in Lansing, not always fun in Lansing, but I wanted to come in just to say hello. Also, I saw a few of you at the MML Conference in Lansing, and I'm sure that was quite beneficial, but wanted to let people know about some upcoming events. First, actually, I'll talk about, we're hosting a town hall here in Ferndale, at Ferndale High School, which I think will be a really interesting event on income and tax inequality in Michigan, and I will do a presentation on the graduated income tax proposal that I've been working on with Representative Townsend from over in Royal Oak. We also have Professor Ballard, who's an economics professor at Michigan State University, who will present on various topics, but specifically with income inequality. He did a study on income inequality, and I'm going to get the years wrong, but I think it was from the 1960s to 2010, something like that, or even going back further, and some really interesting information. I actually sat with him the other day and went over some of the things that he's, you know, he's learned throughout the years, and he's a big personality, I think it'll be a really good event for people to be at. So it is Thursday, April 14th, at 7:00 PM at Ferndale High School, in the auditorium at 881 Pine Crest Drive. So Thursday, April 14th, at 7:00, at Ferndale, the Ferndale High School Auditorium, so I think that will be something worthwhile for people to check out. We sent out, if anyone got one of these, this was in the Woodward Talk, and we sent these out to everyone, it had that date listed in there as well, also some upcoming coffee hours, and also some things, you know, just some helpful hints, talking actually about the graduated income tax proposal, and some things with tax season upcoming. And hopefully, everyone received this, unlike my mom, who got it, I guess, in the Woodward Talk, and I think she just recycled it right away with the rest of the stuff that was just in there, and didn't get it, so hopefully other people didn't recycle it, and they actually had a chance to look at this, if not, I'll leave some of them outside here, and people can call me if they need me to drop one off, or send one to you, or you can even go on our website, wittenberg.housedems.com, and we have an electronic copy of this up there as well, but always encourage people to call me or email me if they have any questions or need anything. And our next coffee hour upcoming will be Monday, April 4th, the Pleasant Ridge Community Center at 10:30 AM, and then Tuesday, April 5th, at the Honeywood Parks and Rec at 6:30 PM. So those are the next two, and then it has a list of other upcoming events, and people can come, obviously you don't have to live in one of those communities, you can live anywhere and show up at any one of them, and come to multiple if you want. I don't necessarily encourage that, because we go over a lot of the same stuff, but if anyone wants to, you know, come out and ask any questions, or, you know, keep me posted on things that they're concerned about, or ideas, even sometimes people come to me with ideas, I actually just had my first bill passed, that's on the Governor's desk now to be signed, and it originated from an idea of a constituent.
Excellent.
So those things can happen, so I encourage people, if they have ideas or thoughts, to reach out to me and let me know. As far as what's going on in Lansing, I won't go over everything, there's, you know, there's been a lot, but one of the biggest, biggest issues right now that you'll be hearing about is with our budget, setting the budget here, and obviously the Governor comes out with his budget proposal, and that's obviously just kind of his recommendation, still has to go through the whole process, the appropriations process, and has to be voted on. I know there, you know, our concerns with DPS, also with Flint, so there's a lot of things that have gone on that have, in essence, you know, in my mind, has been a lot of failed government, when you have a Governor and a legislature that, you know, is putting the bottom line and spreadsheets over people, you know, that's our job, is to serve people, and that's something I don't think they really take into consideration, so we've seen, unfortunately, what happens when that's the case. I know I've been in touch with Superintendent Pruitt, and I will continue to talk to him, and I won't vote for a school aid budget that will harm any of the students in our area, I, you know, I really don't think you should be taking from one to give to the other, I think they should all be doing well, all our students across the state, it's part of our Constitution, they deserve a first-class education here, and so we'll have to find other ways to make sure that they're made whole. And again, these children, they are our future, and we have to do everything we can, that's something I campaigned on, that's something I will always fight for, is to make sure that all our students have the proper funding that they need, and all our educators and our public schools are taken care of. So that's something I'll keep in mind, obviously, that, you know, throughout the process, but if you have any questions now, or going forward, anyone at home has any questions or concerns, they can always reach out to me, you know, emails robertwittenberg@house.mi.gov, I think that's right, that's right, good. And they can call me, you figure I would have memorized the number by now, but I don't have it memorized, there's a toll-free number, 855-Rep-Wit, that one I should memorize. So you can reach me, you can reach me there as well, I forgot we had that, I apologize.
By your second term, we lost those memories.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah.
One goal, and that's exactly it, to remember my phone number. This day and age with a cellphone, you just, you know, you click "Call," or, you know, I'll tell the Bluetooth in the car to call. So that's just kind of brief, what's going on, just wanted to obviously let you know about those upcoming events, and give you a brief update, and happy to answer any questions that you might have, about anything in general, anything specifically.
Any questions of our State Rep? Appreciate you stopping by, as always, you're always very accessible, and thanks for coming by.
Always, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rep. Alright, moving on in the agenda now, we have three public hearings this evening, and so we'll start with Public Hearing A, which is the 2016 Liquor License Renewals, Consideration to Objection on Grounds of Non-Compliance. Dan, do you want to introduce?
Your Honor, I'd be happy to introduce that item. This is, as Council knows, the annual opportunity for Council to weigh in with respect to the renewal of liquor licenses, they have a opportunity, they have to have their license issued by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, their license expires April 30th, the city has an opportunity to object, should it deem it appropriate, with respect to the renewal of its Class C liquor licenses. The city, back in 1988, passed a resolution that outlined a number of criteria as to what standards the city council would hold Class C liquor license establishments. That includes issues like criminal activity, issues like compliance with all of the city's codes and ordinances, delinquencies with respect to water and sewer charges, as well as status with respect to payment of both real and personal property taxes. There are five establishments that the city administration has determined is not in compliance with the city's resolution. Notices were provided to all of those establishments, indicating that a public hearing would be held this evening, where people could weigh in and provide comment as to whether Council should object to the renewal of those Class C establishments. The five establishments are Faisal Enterprises, which is the Blue Nile, Dino Drop, which is Dino's, Posh Entertainment, which is the closed Eden location on Woodward, Secreto Cigar Vault, and the fifth is Pops for Italian on Nine Mile Road. So at this time, it would be appropriate to open, the Council's agenda has identified one public hearing, if people wish to speak to any of those particular items, they can, after the close of the public hearing, Your Honor, I would elicit testimony from the city manager as it relates to the status of the default regarding each of those establishments prior to Council considering any resolution.
Alright, very good. So at this point, we will open the public comment, is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak on the issue of the liquor license renewals? Does it look like, alright, going once, going twice, alright, so we'll close the public hearing portion, and as you indicated...
If I could, very briefly, Your Honor, I would like to ask the city manager as it relates to the status of the five establishments. In this particular case, the focus of the objection from the administration is the delinquency and failure to pay real and personal property taxes.
And to be clear, because as the agenda that was published and put online indicated there were two other locations, Woodward Avenue Brewery and the Emery, but that is not included, those...
Those are not included, Your Honor, that's because they cured those issues.
Thank you.
And just on that point, historically, Council has considered establishments where there was a particular defect with respect to the criteria, and Council has passed an objection to the renewal, and subsequent, but before the license expires on April 30th, Council, the issue has been cured, and Council in the past has considered resolutions to rescind the objection, and that certainly would be at least an opportunity for Council, should those issues get cured before the end of April.
Thank you.
If I could, Your Honor.
Please.
April, are you familiar with the status of the delinquent real and personal property taxes owed to the city of Ferndale by Blue Nile?
Yes.
And as of today's date, are you familiar with the amount that's currently owed for both real and property taxes?
Yes.
And what is that amount?
$15,973.90.
Okay, and with respect to Dino Drop, Dino's, are you familiar with the records regarding payment of real and personal property taxes as it relates to that establishment?
Yes.
And are there still property taxes that are outstanding?
Yes.
And what is the amount of that?
$3,156.57, however, just to clarify, that he has been in contact with us and is currently trying to rectify that situation.
And with respect to the Posh Entertainment License, are you familiar with the status of taxes paid to the city regarding that establishment?
Yes.
And is there amounts due and owing to the city?
Yes.
And what are the amounts?
$24,417.58.
Moving on to Secret Cigar Vault, are you familiar with the status of the payments with respect to that establishment?
Yes.
Are there amounts owing to the city concerning that licensed establishment?
Yes.
And what are the amounts of those?
$1,330.33.
And finally, with respect to Pops for Italian, you're familiar with that establishment?
Yes.
It's a new establishment?
Yes.
And are you familiar with whether that establishment owes real and/or personal property taxes to the city?
Yes.
And what are the amounts of that?
$11,028.42.
Thank you. With that, Your Honor, there are proposed resolutions consistent with what Council has considered in the past, that would object to the renewal of the liquor licenses based on the criteria, specifically, a criteria six and 12, which address real and personal property taxes and amounts that are delinquent, that are owed to the city, which would be appropriate for your consideration.
And a point of our follow-up as well, is that we will follow up with all of these businesses, again, as we normally do, to make sure and encourage them to rectify that so that in April 11th, you can, if you aren't interested in providing a follow-up resolution rescind it.
So there would be one more opportunity for Council at the April 11th meeting?
Technically, two. There will, the resolution requires that they will get notice of, should you adopt the resolution, and they would, if they cure the item at either the first or second Council meeting, as long as it's, as long as Council were to consider a resolution rescinding its prior action prior to April 30th...
Okay.
They could do that.
Okay, thank you. So is there a motion?
May I ask a clarification question?
Of course.
You'd mentioned that Dean Bach had been in touch with us with regards to Dino's license, have we heard from any other business owner?
Not, I have not, no. Barb, have you? Uh, Joe? No.
I, on that issue, I did receive a call from the business manager of the Secret Cigar Vault, who indicated he was trying to have the matter addressed, as I understand it, it has not been addressed as of today's date.
And then, as a matter of history, to our knowledge, have we ever removed someone who is currently in arrears, but has been in contact with us and made a good faith effort from the actual ordinance, even though we could rescind it before the 30th? Historically, as a matter of process, if we're working with them, have we ever pulled them off the list? Do you know, does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't believe that has occurred, Councilman, I do believe that subsequent to the initial objection, there has been a, at least on one occasion, a workout agreement, but again, it was after the first objection.
Thank you.
Alright, other questions? Or a motion?
I would move that we adopt the resolution objecting to the renewal of the liquor license issued to Posh Entertainment Incorporated, Pops for Italian, Ferndale Supper Club LLC, Dino's, Dino Drop Inc., Blue Nile, Faisal Enterprises Inc., Secret Cigar Bar and Bistro, Secret Cigar Vault LLC, as submitted.
Support.
Moved by Martin, and supported by Pollocka. Now, any discussion, comments, questions of Council?
I mean, this is pretty perpunctual, we do this every year.
Every year, yes, we do. Alright, Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Pollocka.
Yes.
Deanna.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter. Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Now, moving on to the next public hearing, which is a public hearing on 430 West Nine Mile Road, also known as the Ferndale House Loft, is that, I guess I worked, Brownfield Plan Considerations. And Justin, you're going to introduce that item?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Just before the public hearing, we thought that it might be a good idea just to give a brief update on what a Brownfield program is, why we consider it, and then just a little bit of information about both of the projects that are here for public hearings tonight. The projects are both separate, different plans, but we thought maybe a good introduction would suffice, since it's been a while, at least since 2014, I think, since the Brownfield plan's been considered in front of Council. So the first project for tonight's agenda is Ferndale House Loft, 430 West Nine, formerly the Save-A-Lot property. Can't really see the picture you hear, but essentially, this was the property during this winter, and so we're talking about essentially 1.2 acres of a functionally obsolete building along with the associated service parking lot. The proposed project, as it stands now, is a higher-density mixed-use project, with some commercial space as well as residential building. Ninety apartments are included in the plan, the plan, the site plan has been approved by the Planning Commission, and design also reviewed by the DDA's Appearance Review Committee as well. Along with the 90 apartment units, there's 5,000 square feet of commercial space, some ground-level residential parking, and then also included is some public art installations that the DDA and the developer are working on together, as well as some potential park improvements to the adjacent park there at Shiffr Park. So definitely a big change, potentially, to the downtown from what is currently there and what's been there vacant for quite a while. In the Brownfield Plan, it's a proposed $14.9 million in total investment for the entire project. That is not inclusive of the entire Brownfield Plan, which we'll get into, but we're talking about 29 potentially full-time jobs with, between the creation of the actual apartment units, as well as the commercial space, 25 jobs there as well, as well as the construction jobs that go on with that. jobs that go along with that. The brownfield plan, which was part of your packet, talks about eligible activities, which I'll talk about more, in reimbursement over 13 years. So when we talk about eligible activity, it's everything from environmental site assessments to demo and asbestos abatement and general site preparation and infrastructure improvements. So those are the only eligible activities that can be reimbursed as part of this project. This project aligns with a lot of the plans that we've been talking about for years, so it's nice to see a plan presented that lines up with the master plan, the old master plans as well as the one we're currently working on, and then also different goals that the DDA board has as part of their plan as well. So you've heard it talked about at the master plan open house, but we, in Ferndale, there's a sort of a lack of missing middle housing. And what that means is we have a lot of single-family homes in Ferndale. There's definitely a lot of other markets they're looking for, something in between that's, you know, a one-bedroom apartment. They're not, maybe not ready, they have a lot of student loans, maybe they're not ready to jump to buying a house in Ferndale, but potentially these are people that we think probably, once they get to Ferndale in their younger years, love it and potentially look for something to stay more permanently as well. Accomplishes a lot of the higher density that we've been talking about lately, and just generally a more efficient land use than the existing vacant building and surface parking lot. There's a lot of permitted uses that could be there. This is one of the more efficient ways you can utilize the property potentially. As I said, 90 units that could be potentially 90 more residents living downtown, visiting daytime businesses, something we've been talking about a lot as part of the master plan, walking, within walking distance of shops or restaurants, and then just a decrease in service parking, as I mentioned. Developers expressed interest in being a partner with the DDA and the city in improving the park with various improvements there. And then we've also talked about, or there's also the possibility that the developer's been working with MEDC as, on community revitalization program, which is under state program that specifically funds mixed-use downtown projects. So that's the first project. The second public hearing that we'll go over more of, but just wanted to give a brief introduction, was for Search Optics. Search Optics is a digital marketing company. They've been here for quite some time, and they've been operating out of 1938 Burdette. And since they've moved back, they've moved from San Diego to Michigan, they've really kind of grown with the city, and we feel like they really want to be partners with us, and we'd like to be partners with them moving forward. So far, they've invested 2.3 million dollars in their existing building at 1938 Burdette. And that created 92 permanent jobs in the time that they've been here. When they did move here, they were partially recruited by the state of Michigan, and the leadership that was here at the time provided some incentives for them to move from California to Michigan. Unfortunately, there was a change in leadership at the state, and so that funding did go away. And Search Optics, they decided to stay here and continue to invest in the community, revitalize that area. They actually, as part of a previous expansion, they purchased the old police surface, or impound lot, turning that into, and cleaning up some of the environmental issues that were there in the past, and it kind of allowed them to grow and expand. The new investment that they're proposing is just over $1 million in new investment, so, and providing 100 more tech jobs as well as 15 service jobs with the accompanying restaurant that's proposed. Their reimbursement period is a bit longer, 27 years for a lesser amount, but also does include a lot of similar eligible activities in remediation and demolition and asbestos and site prep. These are just a couple images of what the proposed campus should look like, could look like, and we see this as a good investment for East Nine Mile as we continue to see development grow in that corner of the city. So by creating this campus that includes buildings along Burdette and Vester, this project promotes walkability and just general further investment, and again, more office daytime users, office workers, that we feel will, you know, be a benefit to all the businesses that operate in the city and hopefully potential residents for anyone who would like to live and work in Ferndale. So that's kind of an overview of the two projects. Since it's been a while, we thought we'd talk about what the brownfield program means to the city. There's been a number of projects, and we've actually, it's been a while since the brownfield authority had even seen a project in probably a year and a half or so. But we've been talking about maybe in the future having a tour of just the great investment that this program has brought to the city. Properties like 965 Wanda that now house, you know, three or four different users that were all looking for space and found a good space, that was kind of a hindrance to the community and now is a true benefit. But as I said, it's a state program, so all about promoting community revitalization and redevelopment of functionally obsolete, blighted, and contaminated properties. Essentially, the taxable value of the property, when the brownfield plan starts, is frozen and captured at that current rate. So you're not, a property, or taxing jurisdictions are not losing, you know, money from the start. This actually stabilizes the current tax rate. And then as the capture period moves along, the increased tax assessment is used to repay the eligible activities that I talked about over the life of the project. Both of these projects have different lengths of the project, but the end goal is the same for the developer to be recouped for some of these expensive activities that sometimes hinder projects from moving forward. So benefits that we've seen on past projects and think we'll see with these projects are stabilizing the tax base, projecting for a higher future tax rate, revitalizing those properties, and then increasing density, walkability, job creation, promoting mixed use, all of these projects, both of these projects kind of bring both of those element, all of those elements together. And so, so that's just kind of a general introduction before we start the public hearing, and I can answer any questions about this, and I can talk more specifically about Ferndale House as the first public hearing as well.
Is there any additional introduction to the first presentation on Ferndale House?
Just that, so being in the downtown district, the DDA, the approval of the Ferndale House plan is contingent upon approval from the DDA board, and Barry is here to answer any questions about that, but that approval, should it happen, would be later this month as well.
Okay. Good. So then I guess we'll open up the public hearing?
You should, Your Honor, have a public hearing for each proposed...
Yes, separately, of course, yes. So we'll open up the public hearing for the first project, which is 430 West Nine Mile, the Ferndale House Loft, on the consideration of a brownfield plan. So I'll ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to address council this evening on this project and, not on the project, but on the consideration of a brownfield property. Anyone? All right. Not seeing anyone? We'll close the public hearing portion of that, and I will open it up to council for your questions, comments on a brownfield plan consideration for 430 West Nine Mile. Yes, Councilwoman...
Justin, I had to think of a name.
Councilwoman Leakes May.
Regarding the, this development, I really like the idea of it coming to downtown, but it says that there will be 90 units. Do you know the details of the units? Will it be, and do you know the rate in which?
I can answer some of those questions, but I should have also said, the developer's team is also here to answer questions as well. So they can assist me if there's anything I don't get correct. But yes, 90 units, and there's a mixture of studios and one-bedrooms, and I believe a few two-bedroom apartments. I believe market rate is the, the monthly cost is based on market rate for whatever is in the market by the time this is built.
Which is, I mean, I've not rented in a long time.
If I may, I am the city council representative to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and I asked the same question. And the starting rate, if I recall, is 1,000 for the single unit, for the single units, up to 1,400 for the bigger units.
Yeah, for the studios and one-bedrooms, correct. That's what the market that we did a study with, and basically that's what we found is probably, a lot of studio singles, a majority because of the size of the building.
Other questions? Any other questions?
Yeah. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about the eligible activities to cover the construction of a parking structure? How does that relate to the Brownfield redevelopment eligible activities?
Sure. Yes, so essentially, two years ago, the Michigan Strategic Fund, is that correct? They had previously, infrastructure improvements, I don't believe, including parking structures, were included in the eligible activities, but about two years ago, in a way to help cities and developers increase density in urban areas, that was included. And Elizabeth, I don't know if you have any more feedback on that?
Yeah, I mean, I guess to tie that in is, the project wouldn't be possible without public-private partnership, just with the rate, the sheer rate of expenses associated with the construction of the parking structure. And the idea is, in that, in helping bridge that financial gap, you're getting less surface parking in the downtown, and you're still being able to accommodate for the density of housing, 90-plus residents in that area. Thank you.
If I may, through the chair, I know that notices probably, or usually go out to the neighboring property owners, correct, for the public hearing, but what conversations in your development have you had with the neighbors and what's the feedback you've gotten?
Just so I, or for clarification, the public hearing for this project, for the brownfield is just the taxing jurisdictions, so library...
So there wasn't notice to...
Public note, not mail notice, but there was notice in that the agenda was posted...
Sure, of course. Thank you. So my question, Stell, what interaction have we had with the neighbors?
We went to the planning commission meeting. We talked to some of the neighbors in the area. Because of the location of it and because it's an abandoned, you know, supermarket, there really weren't no neighbors right there, and we're not creating any more traffic on any of the neighborhood streets, and all the parking spaces, all the units are parking on-site. So there weren't, I don't think there were any comments really at the planning commission, and we didn't ask for any variances or anything else.
The property abuts to the Housing Commission property, though, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay, so I'd encourage some conversation there with the new executive director and the board, or the commission?
We'd like to talk to them, because we talked about, talking about the alley, there's an abandoned alley there, and they encouraged us to take the alley, because it's empty, obviously, and they don't really use it. So yes, we will be meeting with them.
Great, thank you.
So, and so while you're here, I have three quick comments. Number one, I love this project. I welcome you to town. I appreciate it. This is a, this is a site that has been ripe for a development like this, and so congratulations. I'm happy to see this moving along. I think it's going to be an exciting addition to our downtown. Number two, our parks are near and dear to my heart, so I appreciate your willingness to work on, with us, on doing something with the park there to make that a more lively and urban, exciting space next year.
Summer movies?
Open to your ideas and suggestions, but I, yes. I very much appreciate your willingness to do that. And then finally, like Councilwoman Piana is our BRA representative here, I worked on brownfield development projects at Oakland County, and this is exactly the right tool to make these kinds of projects happen. Not only are they not unusual, but they're often critical to make these happen, and so I'm very supportive of using this tool. I'm glad we have this as a, some communities don't have this tool, but they go through Oakland County, which is how I often got involved in these, but I think this is the appropriate tool to make this kind of a project on this kind of a site happen. And so I just, I wish you all the best, and I'm happy to support your project.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks. Other comments or questions? All right.
Actually, what is the, I don't think I've discussed it here, but, and it looks like there's going to be a couple three bedrooms as well. Did I say that right?
Three bedrooms, yeah.
Sort of, okay. So what is, prior to, upon departure from this meeting tonight, what's the timeline? What can we expect if someone asks me on the street? What can I tell them?
I'm ready to go over there right now.
You have to show them in the back of your car?
We'd love to get started right away, especially because winter's coming up. I mean, not tomorrow, but things happen pretty quickly. So the brownfield is very important. Construction costs have gone up so much over the last couple of years, especially with all the projects in Detroit. So this is really important to us. We appreciate your helping us out with this. And if we, was it early May, the LOI comes from the MEDC, and the second we get it, we're allowed to start. So we hope to start, you know, second week of May.
Excellent.
I'm going to go?
Well, I just wanted to say, welcome to Ferndale. Very happy to have residential units come into the city. We've been needing residential living in the downtown for a long, long time, so I'm very excited on that aspect.
Good. And a motion would be in order.
I move that the city council approve the attached resolution regarding the combined brownfield 381 work plan for 430 West Nine Mile Road with the conditions stated in the resolution.
Support. All right, moved by Piana and supported by Martin. Now, any final comments or questions from council or anyone in the audience for that? Oh, no, we had a public comment, never mind.
I have a couple comments.
This is a regular agenda item, yes.
If I may?
Yeah.
I think development is always hard for a downtown, and developers always look for return on investment, and I know our community is talking about the number of parking spots and the need for housing, whether we need it or not. I think everything points to the direction we do need middle housing, and the interest of keeping our rental rates in a range where our teachers and students can afford to live in our downtown. And so I just wanted to say that when you add on parking spots on a building, or you, you know, that adds the cost to a rental unit, right? So when you negotiate with a developer about amenities for that building, it can change, it all goes back into the cost of renting that unit. So the more parking, that means that, you know, I think it's 20,000 average per parking spot?
Yes, underground.
Underground, goes back into a rental unit cost. And so I think all these things need to be taken in consideration when we look at providing an incentive of this nature to a development project that benefits our downtown. And I think in this case, this definitely merits one, and that if we didn't provide this incentive, the 2.2 million dollars, the project either doesn't get done because the return on investment isn't worthy of it, or that 2.2 million dollars of cleanup and gets wrapped into the rental rates, right? So I think someone pays for that at the end of the day, and which is why cities need these types of incentives to lower the cost of a project, to make it more affordable for people and for the developer to get a return on investment. So I really like this public-private partnership approach to this project. So thank you.
Any other last questions, comments?
Just echo what everyone else said, welcome to Ferndale. It's a neat project. I'm glad you're here.
All right, Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Leakes May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That plan is adopted. Thanks, and good luck. All right, now we have a second brownfield consideration, brownfield plan consideration, this one at 938-1956 to 1966 Burdette Street and 531-600 and 621 Vester Street, the Search Optics project that Justin described earlier.
Yeah, I pretty much gave an overview of the project, but, you know, we think it's a, it's a great partnership with Search Optics, and they've, you know, shown and demonstrated that they can improve an area and bring in some of, you know, some highly sought-after jobs that we hope to get more of, and there's clearly demand for it in the master plan. So the motion again tonight is to... the master plan, so, so, the motion again tonight is to approve, and I, I should have mentioned earlier as well, with, with both plans, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority reviewed both of these plans last month at the March meeting, and unanimously approved both of those, so.
Very good, so at this point, I will open up the public hearing, is there anyone from the public, from the public that would like to address us on the search optics Brownfield Plan Consideration this evening?
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council. My name is Mark Adams, I'm with Oakland County Economic Development, and I worked with Search Optics early 2009, 2010, and I'm here in support of this project, I think it's a great company, I think it sort of speaks to what the state of Michigan, what cities like Ferndale, what the county is trying to do to sort of diversify. Uh, we are more than a one-trick pony, we love automotive, we know we're the research and development capital of the world, I've worked on many projects along those lines, but these technology companies, digital marketing, I think this is the wave of the future, these types of businesses, especially businesses of this size, that's the growth that we're going to see in the future. We're very pleased that they are here in Ferndale, and that they are expanding, and we look forward to their success, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone else who would like to address council on this project this evening? All right, if not, we'll close the public hearing, and I will open it up to questions Questions or motions?
I move that the city council approve the attached resolution regarding the combined Brownfield 381 work plan for the search optics campus, 1938, 1956 to 1966 Burdette Street, and 531-600 and 621 Vestor Street, with the following condition as presented in the agenda.
Is there support?
I support.
Moved by Polika, supported by Leaks May. All right, now, comments, thoughts, questions, concerns?
I couldn't say it better than the gentleman, having tech jobs remain in Ferndale is, is paramount, and I'm, I'm so glad that we're able to work with these type of companies who continue to expand, to make it easier for them to stay in our city. It's not easy for them to have to pull up roots and, and go to another location, and kind of start all over again, even though you're expanding, it's, it's a lot of work, and just to continue to expand right here in Ferndale has, has got to be easier, so I'm glad we can make it easier, and I'm glad you're able to stay.
And, and adding on to that, the, the added benefit of this is, this isn't a company that we're taking a gamble on, because this is a company that's proven their success and their commitment to our community, and just happy to continue to have you here and expand here in Ferndale, so happy to support this as well. Other comments, questions?
I echo everybody, yeah.
All right. Barb, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Polika.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, that plan is adopted, thanks, I appreciate it, good luck. All right, that concludes our public hearings this evening, we'll move now to call to audience, this is your opportunity, for those of you who are here with us in person, to come and address council on any issue that you would like, come on up, give us your name, your address, if you're comfortable doing that, and three minutes to speak on anything that's not on the agenda, because we'll let you speak to that when we get to that part of the agenda. Come on up, and have your say. Know this gentleman very well, how are you, sir?
Hey there, Dennis Arson, 1550 Spencer, got a question.
All right.
What happened to those little blue and white signs that were posted on our street corners, about the snow emergencies? Sorry, I was going to try and make it at the last meeting, but I didn't, because it was right after that last little snowstorm we had, and quite frankly, my snowplows couldn't get down my street. And all those blue signs that council approved the money for to have printed up are not on any one of the street corner signs anywhere in the city, and it's about the snow emergency. Y'all live here in the city of Ferndale, you had to know what I'm talking about.
Not the permanent signs that say...
The blue ones that were, been on there for a couple of years and that, and were starting to work so well. Chief Collins and his fellow police officers did a fine job of cleaning the streets out so that plows could get up and down it, they're gone, and my street looked like hell. You guys threw the money to put signs up, and then you turn around and you take them down. I don't have money to waste on a government, you know? Help these bitches out, we got firefighters, we need the police chief, and there's all, all these departments to get to our houses, and they can't get down them, because they look like heck.
Well, there seems to have prompted response by our police chief, so Chief Collins, do you have a want to weigh in on that?
Your honor, those, those signs all have been removed because we changed the ordinance, that, we know that was an automatic snow emergency at four inches, that's no longer the case, city yard can declare a snow emergency at two inches if they'd like, so it's no longer the automatic four inches that would require you to be off the road, it's when a snow emergency is declared by the Department of Public Works, so the signs were removed because they're no longer necessary.
Okay, I got to comment to that, too. I got an email, this is my email that I got, "Snow Emergency," I got it at seven o'clock in the morning. At the end of the snow emergency, I got the email at four o'clock. Sat there and I watched television and that, and not one word was mentioned on channel two, four, or seven. And I asked my wife, I said, "Did you see anything on there?" And she said, "No." Went and asked my neighbors, "No." So, something was missed, if the word was put out, TV stations didn't put it out, and it showed on my street alone. So, I mean, something was working effectively, but now it's not, okay? And I mean, you know, we got some people out there that needed, was it hundred-dollar tickets? Eighty-dollar tickets that needed one or two of them on my street before they got off the street and that, you know, I just ain't got the money to pay for the insurance because somebody else's car got wrecked, and that, so, that's my, that's what I got to say.
Good, thank you. Anyone else who would like to address council this evening? Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, Michael Daley, 1638 Bowfield, since 1987.
Nice.
Longtime resident.
Longtime resident.
So, after many years, I can finally afford to put a garage in, and now there's an ordinance that says there has to be a five-foot setback on the side. I tried to go through the appeal process, and was shot down. I'd like the city of Ferndale to reconsider this, I've called around other communities, Royal Oak Park, all around, and everybody's under three feet. The, the idea of this ordinance is for fire safety, I've talked to our chief Sullivan, and I had positive feedback from him regarding the, the intent of this ordinance. In my particular situation, I do not have another structure closer than ten feet, and I was really hoping to have a variance. I'd like the council to consider putting it back to the three feet, as our neighboring communities are, so maybe in a future agenda, we could have this discussion, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, hi, I'm Sharon Schuss, 1119 Earl, and it's a reminder about our upcoming concert this Sunday at three o'clock in Ferndale High School for the Ferndale Community Concert Band. We're having a guest, Ava Ordman, who is the associate professor of trombone for Michigan State University, so it'll be a really exceptional concert. On that note, I had the opportunity to also speak with Heather, our new housing commissioner, and we would like to make arrangements for the residents of those areas to attend our concert, but we need the bus service that we have at the senior center, and we don't know how to make those arrangements, and once we do find out how to make those arrangements, and who to make them with, we'd like to have a continual calendar of our concerts available, so it can be an ongoing thing. And Heather also asked if either one of the buses were accessible for either the electric carts or wheelchairs, and what she's going to do is have the residents of those places sign up in advance, so we know how many spots that we would need, and then that way, we can also do a timing. So, we would need access to the buses from like two o'clock in the afternoon to three, which is the time of the concert, and the concert will be about an hour and a half, so from four-thirty to five o'clock to take the residents back.
Jill, is that something that you could talk to her about, or...
Yep.
Okay, so you know Jill, our recreation director, and that's where the buses are, so my suggestion is, contact Jill and see if we can work something out, it's a great idea, if we can make it work, it sounds like a great idea.
All right, super, and then, another thing, we're new to the area, we're less than one year old, so we currently don't qualify for a lot of funding and grants, however, we have just recently become acquainted with a project where if a business, looking at the new project that's going to go on, and if the city will support it, we may qualify for a grant to help build a small music venue with a development that's going on over at Plannavon and Nine Mile, and I'll have more information on that at the end of April, but that could also tie into their project as well with some supporting funds, okay? Thanks, sir.
If I may through the chair, I'd like to have council wish Sharon a happy birthday.
Oh.
No, really? Happy birthday, Sharon. I won't ask you how old.
Back again.
Yes, sir.
That gentleman right there, I brought to you a while back, a situation similar, because I pulled a permit for a building, I had to abide by all the same rules he just bought, brought up, and on the corner of my street, they built a building there that exceeded every code that I had to abide by, and they were within five feet, they were higher than the height requirements, and now they're building another building, I don't care if they're getting what they want, but the point is, is if the city's going to approve these building standards, and these building projects in residential areas, then I should be able to, he should be able to, and everyone in here should have to have the same right, there shouldn't be a double set of standards in these building codes, okay? He just brought it up, and he brought up something that I brought to you guys, what, a year ago, maybe a year ago, okay? They put it right on my street corner for me to look at every day, and believe you me, I got some strange looks from those people down on there, because they knew who I was, because they were paying attention to the city council meeting here, and every time I went by there, they looked at me, so I finally stood there, or stopped there one day, and I talked to them, and I told them, you know, "I'm glad you got what you wanted, I wanted something bigger, couldn't get it, you guys got what you wanted, the city approved it, okay, fine." If this is going to be the way it is, then it has to be the same for everybody, you can't have a double set of standards, and I brought that to your attention once already, and now this gentleman's bringing it up again, and these people have got another building two blocks further south, and they did the same thing, they built a pole barn style that exceeds height and any easement issues, okay? This city allowed that, this building department allowed that, okay? I know what that guy's going through, because Mark Howell was out there with his tape measure, making sure that I wasn't an inch over or an inch under, so I know what that gentleman's going through there, the double set of standards in this building department's got to quit, okay? Make it right for everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to... You're not from the public, but we'll let you speak anyway.
Good evening, I just want to remind everybody that on Saturday, May 21st, is the fifth annual Clean the Ferndale Up, and for all information referring, related to the, the event this year is on the website, cleantheferndaleup.com, so...
Excellent.
Registration is also available online.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else who would like to address council this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on now to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are items that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion, unless council removes something from the consent agenda, let me read that agenda now. Item A is the approval of a minute in the regular meeting held March 14, 2016, and the special meeting held March 1st, 2016. Item B is the adoption of condolence resolution for Deputy Treasurer Russell Pidszony. Item C is the adoption of a resolution in recognition of National Take Our Sons and Daughters to Work Day on April 28, 2016. Item D is the adoption of a resolution proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Ferndale. Item E is the approval of ordinance number 1181, adopting the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code, ordinance number 1182, adopting the 2015 Michigan Residential Code, and ordinance number 1183, adopting the 2015 International Fuel Gas Code, all submitted by our building official. Item F is the approval to authorize the police department to purchase a Power DMS software from Power DMS for a total of $3,660, to come from the computer operations account. Item G is the approval to authorize the city manager to fill an additional full-time custodian for general cleaning and maintenance of city buildings, and finally, item H is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by our city manager's office, subject to review by our council's finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
If I could make a, just, I have two statements, if I may through the chair.
Sure.
With regards to the meeting minutes that are presented, I just, two suggestions, and I certainly don't want to go back to any meeting minutes and correct them, but in the future, can we refer to Councilwoman Piana as Mayor Pro Tem Piana? And then, we're inconsistent on the, how we list people, if we, sometimes we list titles, sometimes we just list last names, I don't really care which one we do, but if we can find some level of consistency in the minutes, I know it varies who takes them, but if there's like a standard guide or something that, that makes them more consistent. And then, secondly, there's three resolutions in the consent agenda, and I don't, I like it when we read those, I don't know that we have to read all of them, but I would like somebody to at least read the, the condolences for Russ, he was a fifteen-year employee, if somebody can read that.
If I may?
Yes, please.
Um, if, if you all know, I had an opportunity to work with Russ as a Michigan Suburbs Alliance employee, who rented space out of Ferndale City Hall, so I got to know him a little bit, certainly not on the same level as being an employee here, but Russ was known for taking his walks around town, and getting this lay of the land, so, the regular meeting of city council of the city of Ferndale, Oakland County, Michigan, held in the council chambers on March 28th, Mayor David Coulter, on behalf of the Ferndale City Council, extends the city's condolences to the family of Russell Itzoni, I've never known how to say his last name.
You're close, you're good.
Itzoni. Russ served this community with honor and dedication in the finance department for the past fifteen years, first as a receiving tower, and later being promoted to deputy treasurer. Russ was a credit to his family and to this community, and was loved by his city Ferndale family, and is with deep sorrow that we mourn his law, mourn his loss.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, good, good idea.
And I'd like to move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Moved by Martin, supported by Polika. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
Thank you.
Questions either by council or by members of the audience? Sure.
Billy Ragland, and I'm here from Carehouse of Oakland County to say thank you for the resolution proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month.
And why don't, since you're from Carehouse, why don't you just give us a, your brief...
Sure, we provide prevention, hold on, let me see this, prevention, intervention, and treatment for victims of child abuse and neglect, particularly child sexual abuse, for victims, or people under thirteen, or adults that have developmental delays, disabilities, and severe physical abuse. So, we see about a thousand kids a year for interviews regarding sexual abuse... So we see about 1,000 kids a year for interviews regarding sexual abuse. And then we serve another 3,000 or 4,000 children and families in the county through our prevention programs and home visiting programs. So it's pretty difficult work, as you can imagine sometimes, but when people care about the work that you do and take time to do stuff like this, it makes the days go by a little bit easier for us. So we'll take this plaque and put it on a wall, and we call it in the office, the Wall of Cities That Care. So it's nice to have Ferndale on it because they aren't all.
Very happy to join that wall. It's an important subject, and it's a wonderful organization, so thanks for the work that you do.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for coming up and saying that. All right, Barb, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Leaks May.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Pollocka.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Piana.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to our regular agenda. Item A is a consideration to adopt a resolution for citizen interaction design partnership with the University of Michigan. And Joe, you're going to introduce that item.
Yes, Mayor, councilwoman. Here to enthusiastically introduce this potential partnership with the University of Michigan School of Information Office. I'd like to first introduce Scott Tenbrink, who is the director of the program.
The king of the program.
I've just promoted him to the director of that program. To briefly introduce this concept, Scott and his colleagues presented at the Michigan Municipal League during their annual convention last fall in September. And I had the pleasure of witnessing this presentation and learning about their experiences with the City of Jackson, Michigan, which was their first city, with Councilwoman Pollocka and Piana, Councilwoman Piana, Mayor Pro Tem Piana.
Mel.
And once we, once we were able to watch what they did with the City of Jackson, we continued in engaging with the University of Michigan to see if there were any potential opportunities with the City of Ferndale in the future. And I will let Scott introduce the program and what this might look like.
Thanks, Joe.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I want to start with thinking about what it was like to communicate with your friends and family seven years ago, and what that's like today. What it's like to educate yourself seven years ago, and what it's like to do that today. What it's like to shop seven years ago, and how that has changed over a kind of somewhat randomly selected number of seven years ago, and what that's like today. And then reflect on what it's like to interact with local government, and what that was like 100 years ago. And in many cases, I think the culture and the systems we have built to interact with our local government hasn't changed tremendously over 100 years, or I would argue that in the last seven years, more has changed about how I shop than how I interact with my local government over the last 100 years. That's what we started to think about at the School of Information. And just very briefly, School of Information, because not many people know what those are, is, used to be the College of Library Sciences at the University of Michigan. In 1996, upon some reflection, they started to look at where people are getting information, how that had changed drastically, and decided we have to look at information more broadly than public libraries. So we developed the next generation of information professionals, which is much more than librarians now, as you reflect on all those questions, right? So in citizen interaction design, we're asking the question of what will urban life, and in particular, citizenship, look like in the next 20 years? And how is that different than the previous 20 years? Just go. All right. So our real question is, how do cities and universe, how can we work together? Because we've got these rising information professionals. They're doing all kinds of work for their classes, they're doing internships, and we're not introducing them to the cities that they're, we're hoping, the Michigan cities that they're going to live in one day. And so we wanted to develop some sense of citizenship and understanding of how the skills and knowledge that we're presenting them with is more than a way to increase your salary or create a career path, but it has to do with how you're engaged in your community. So how can information tools be developed that support what we're calling 21st century citizenship? I want to qualify that a little bit, because often when we think of 21st century citizenship, how we shop now versus how we shopped seven years ago, a lot of times we're thinking, I shop, maybe you shop online, and you didn't before. And there's a quick, I shop on my phone now, whereas definitely 14 years ago, you wouldn't even have thought about doing that. That's not the only kind of information tool that we're talking about here. When I go grocery shopping, I have a card that gives me discounts and knows what I regularly buy and what kinds of discounts I might be interested in. It's printing out receipts for me that have coupons on it for the things that I'm interested. That is a huge change. It has nothing to do with my phone or the kind of high-tech solutions that you might jump to, websites, anything like that, right? So that, those information tools are more broad than just that. So we started out with the City of Jackson, and I just want to explain kind of what this partnership, what we're asking for, or what kind of partnership we're looking for. We worked with Jackson for three years. We want to do a long-term partnership. One of the important things about citizen interaction design as a program to us is that it isn't, we have a course, students come in, muck around in your community for a while, write up a seven-page recommendation that you never look at, we leave and say, go blue, we solved all the world's problems once again, right? We're really trying to move away from that and develop some kind of connection with the community that we're in. Help those students understand that this is a community that survives beyond the term of your course. So that's my role as staff, to keep a consistent presence over the period of three years, build up some relationships, develop trust, and move beyond that kind of helicopter-in, helicopter-out mentality. So we've worked on about 24 projects. We've had 86 students in Jackson over the course of three years. And that partnership we established with the council, we asked them to do a resolution to say, we're going to be an anchor organization, we're going to introduce you to people in our community, we're going to kind of move you forward. We've done projects with all kinds of organizations in Jackson, from the Ella Sharp Museum to the Dalham Center, which is an environmental education program, to a neighborhood group, to some concerned citizens who are interested in sidewalk snow removal, the county health department, worked with all kinds of different people, the local library. So lots of projects happen outside of the city as an organization, but we're looking to you for that resolution. We've done all kinds of projects, and these are just some icons that demonstrate the breadth. Like I said, we've worked with the county health department on increasing vaccines. We've worked with the bus, and I'll talk about that a little bit. We've worked with public arts, trying to kind of promote public art in Jackson. So a wide variety, and these are what, 12, 15, with my multiplication skills? 15 projects of the roughly 30 that we've worked on. I want to talk about four of them, it kind of give you a range of what kind of projects we do in a community. This is one that I talked about at the MML convention, so anybody who's up there will recognize it. This is the distressed property report. Jackson has a lot of old and abandoned housing stock, so they've moved to an aggressive condemnation, demolition programs, and especially they're one of the HH4H, Help for the Hardest Hit Program. So they're receiving federal monies to demolish some of these, some of their housing stock that isn't generating revenue and isn't providing shelter for anyone anymore. A lot's going on, and there were a lot of questions in the neighborhood. And I want to stress this at this point, that what we're interested in is citizens and their experience in their community, how they can contribute, learn more, understand, and be a part of their community. It's not about government efficiency, except in that that supports good citizenship. So we've thought, we talked to residents who were asking questions like, what's going on on my block? Why is there an orange sticker on the front of that house? Why isn't there one on this house? We've got people doing drugs or other problems in the house? What's going on with it? This was a tool that we created that made it easy for them to find out more information about what was going on in their community. In this case, it's a website. In some cases, it's a lot simpler solution. In this case, we were looking at historic districts and historic properties, and kind of, we came in to figure out how could we better communicate what the expectations were for people who had a house in a historic district, because there was a lot of confusion. One thing that our students realized right away that somehow just kind of slips by everybody who was involved in the problem was that people didn't know that they lived in a historic district. So we combined a simple form on the website, on the city website, that says, type in your address, and we'll tell you if you're in a historic district, and what the closest address to you that is in a historic district is, just so that you can understand whether you're there or not. We coupled that with some mailings, we did a, we did a magnet that we send out that says, here's some information about how you apply for permits inside of a, inside of a historic district. So really simple solutions, they're not all complex like a website. Along that line of integration, we did a project called Dig Downtown Jackson. Jackson recently went through a big construction project, they tore out the main street. If you've ever been to downtown Jackson, it's about four blocks long, hard to miss, especially if you're on the highway. But come in, there's some beautiful buildings along a main street that was totally torn out to replace sanitary sewer, storm sewer, water, ITC, electrical telecom stuff. And we did it for 18 months, and it was really hard on local businesses. So this was an effort to educate people about how to respond to that. Where can you park? How do you get to the businesses? As well as, and this was kind of the innovative piece, start to educate people about why this stuff is important, why making these replacements are important, and how that infrastructure is connected to their daily life. Understanding that those water pipes are delivering fresh, clean water to your home. Now, it turns out that incidents in Michigan following that really made that important. But we kind of tie it all in here, and this comes with newsletters that went out, and it was a whole kind of information campaign connecting what's happening practically with that to understanding better why this is important for you. And then I want to emphasize, and I left my maps in the car, but this is a piece of paper. I know it's on a website right now, but this is a good old-fashioned piece of paper that is a great information tool, and it was something lacking in the Jackson community. I'm actually, I live in Jackson, and I'm on the board for Jackson Area Transit Authority. And one of the things that we discovered is people don't know how to get around on the bus. It turns out that having a map that helps people understand where to go, instead of photocopies of bus schedules, just something simple that highlights the main places to go. So these are things that somebody never really had the time to review, seem obvious once you get into it, but they needed somebody just to kind of sit down and think through the problem from an information perspective. And what came out of that was a nice set of color-coded maps for each route. We put them up at our, at our bus shelters throughout the, throughout the route. Okay, so one last thing I want to point out about this is, upon reflection, after three years, we saw a few impacts that we never would have expected in the City of Jackson. Every, we imagine that every community is going to have different impacts, but I think these are important to recognize, especially when you're considering this. They developed a new website. There was no intention of doing that at the start, but kind of through working with our students, they understood that there was a bunch of integrated communication that really needed to change, and their website was out of date. They established Michigan's first open data ordinance. So they were the first community in Michigan to adopt an open data ordinance. They also adopted an administrative policy to set up how that would happen, and a web portal to provide information, that data, to the public. So open data is just the concept that obviously you understand, the city holds tons of data, and it's not accessible to the public, there's value in that, and they kind of discovered that, and they've started to establish that. They hired their first public information officer. I think this is a really big step, and as a resident of Jackson, I've seen a big change in how the city communicates, because they have staff devoted to communicating with the public and thinking about how the information in City Hall can get out. And then just recently, it was last summer, the city was awarded a $50,000 startup in-a-day award from the Small Business Association to establish an online process for understanding what's involved in starting a new business in that community. So those are some pretty significant impacts, I think, that we never even expected, you know? We just wanted to go in, create a partnership where our students could understand how their skills applied to the civic realm, and how a community could benefit, and we saw some major improvements. So I'm happy to take any questions, but I hope that you'll find the resolution works for you. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Questions of council?
When does it start?
We need the resolution. And I think that if we get that resolution tonight, Joe and I will talk after the meeting. I'll get with April, and we'll find one thing that we can start doing.
How do you pick the projects?
Okay, great question, and I'm glad you, I'm glad you asked it, because I really wanted to fit more about it in my presentation, and I'm trying to stay short. So, like I said, we're interested in the citizen experience. And so the two things we did in Jackson, which we are looking to replicate here, are find out what's happening in City Hall right now. We don't want to find new projects for your city staff to do, or create opportunities for you to hire new people so that our students can receive a better education, right? So our intention is latch on to the work that's being done, the pieces that are right on the edge of moving forward, and support that. Okay? So what's happening in City Hall right now? What elected officials want to do? And then we want to go to the citizens also and understand what the things that they want to see out of their community. So we're not, we don't really, how do I say this nicely, that we're not that interested in what you want to do. We're interested in what, how the citizens see their community and wish they could participate or connect with or understand better and provide that. So we don't have something identified coming in.
Yeah.
That's part of the process.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Other questions or comments?
I'm, I'm really excited. Joe mentioned that, you know, last year, we were at the MML conference and with Mayor Pro Tem Piana, and at the, one of the breaks, I went up to Scott's booth, and he says, so what's going on in Ferndale? And I said, too much for us to get it all done. Do you happen to have some extra interns that you can send over? And he kind of laughed, and he said, well, let me tell you about our project. So he spent a few minutes telling me, and then I went off quickly, grabbed Joe, and I said, you got to hear this. And that's how the whole conversation started. And I'm really glad that you selected Ferndale as one of your, your next projects, your community projects. I'll just say that we were really excited to find somebody in, a community that was this enthusiastic about it, so thank you.
So then a motion would be over here. Although it's not really a.
It's a motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay.
So I'll move that we adopt the resolution as presented in the council packet.
Support.
All right. My Martin, supported by Pollocka. Now, any other questions, comments?
Just a little comment. You know, it's been one of my interests to move the city forward with e-government and open data, and I think this really will help us take that step forward. I know prior to Joe, we were struggling to actually do anything in the 21st century with some of our data behind the scenes, but you certainly have brought us forward with the technology investments we've made over the couple of years, and so I'm hoping we go another step further.
Sharon?
I have a question.
Come up in, so that everyone can hear you at the mic.
So for as many years, I think, as I've been here in the City of Ferndale, I've been trying to figure out how we can get all of our over 100 nonprofits to communicate and become on the same level, too. Would this be a way to network? Would this be a way to network and collect information and keep it current so we know who's in charge, what their mission is to do and how we can coordinate efforts too? Because I mean, that just seems like a phenomenal piece of information to have too.
That's a great point. Scott, for a town our size, we have an inordinate amount of nonprofit organizations, a kind of a community calendars, all of stuff that's not easy to find where it is.
I'd note that Scott just feverishly took some notes on that, so...
Yeah, so I think you planted a seed, Sharon. Thank you.
That's a great example of what's so exciting about this project is they're all community-driven based, or at least that's our intent. So, it's a bottom-up approach to community problem solving.
And if I decided, he wouldn't have done it. So, the fact that you said it. All right. Excellent. Any other comments or questions? Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Piana?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Pollock?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. Your resolution is adopted. Go forth. We look forward to working with you. Thank you. Item B is the consideration of a contract with ASTI Environmental regarding our southwest storage yard. Who's going to...
I will. I will take that, sir. The city has been looking at better ways of utilizing our southwest storage yard and in that process, we started to do an environmental study just to see exactly what was going on with that site. And at that time, we found elevated levels of methane that were concerning enough to start looking at what the issue was. Immediately, we found that there was a gas leak with the consumer's energy line. They quickly, immediately came out and repaired that. Unfortunately, we expected the methane levels to go down even further and they did not. So, before you, it was a contract with ASTI who will come and begin, and actually has started as of last week, to figure out what the source is of why that methane is elevated. So, this is what this contract is for, is not only to find the source, but to remove the source. And if we can't find it right away to vent the source, why would we continue to look? But, we do believe within the next six weeks, we should be able to figure out where that's coming from and get that rectified.
All right. Questions?
I know the answer, but I'd like it for the folks at home, if I may. Can you comment on the danger level of the methane and also the role of consumers moving forward once we identify the source of the leak? Do you want me to clarify on that a little bit?
Yes, I know the first portion, what you mean about consumers.
Well, I think that we haven't totally, I mean, as we try to, we have to do this venting and find the source of the leak, but once we do, we've not let consumers off the hook on this.
If I could address that, Councilmember. We have provided communication to consumers that the city, while still investigating what the source of the methane is, does intend to hold the responsible party to the extent it can be ascertained responsible.
Yep. Better said than I did.
There you go. Now that we...
And on the health, safety...
Yeah, and I'm going to, this will be the city manager's version of that. At this point, methane where it is, in its natural state, yes, thank you, you can compose this, is stuck within the dirt, if you will, is the layman's way or my way of understanding that. And nobody is in any danger of this methane. It's non-toxic, but we do need to get it removed from the source and that's what we're trying to do to ensure that it doesn't become an issue. So, that's our, we're moving pretty quickly on getting this rectified.
Thank you. I'll then move that we authorize ASTI to provide methane management and investigation services with an amount not to exceed $80,000 and be charged off to 101.371.818.000, Community and Economic Development Special Consulting.
I support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Piana. Any other comments or questions on this item?
I would just make a comment just again for public work, the extent of work that the city is doing, that the city has gone door-to-door in the area around the property to make sure that residents know what's going on and the actions that we're taking. So, I really do appreciate that effort. That was a, I think, important piece.
All right. Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Pollock?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Piana?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. You're misadopted. Final order of business is called to council. Police chief, Collins, anything for the good of the community this evening?
Nothing in this one.
All right. Jill, anything for the recreation department this evening?
Just one quick announcement. Tonight, council passed a resolution adopting April 28th as National Take Our Sons and Daughters to Work Day. This is a new program. Jenny Camples, the Human Resources Director, and myself are working on putting together a formal day of activities for staff and their children to register and come out and enjoy, see the inner workings of the city. We have, there'll be visits to police department, fire department, DPW parks, and then some time spent here at City Hall as well. We currently have 10 children and staff signed up, so we're looking forward to providing this day for staff and their children. We think it'll be a great opportunity to not only show the kids, but also staff as well, to see some of the other departments that they may not get to visit on a daily basis. So, with that, we're hoping during the lunch hour that our idea is to maybe have lunch and maybe a mock council meeting for the kids. So, I'd like to invite all of city council to attend if they're able that day and I can send follow-up information as well. If you're interested, so, thank you.
I just thought, since I know a little girl that would love to attend and be involved with that, so, trust me.
May I have been Councilmember Pollock as my child to work day?
Thanks, Gerald. Economic development, which, who's, is going to be you tonight, Justin?
You choose, whichever folks.
Right.
As you know, the Regional Transit Authority of Southeast Michigan has been working on their master plan and a lot of that is focusing on Woodward, right down the street here, and the idea of Bus Rapid Transit. So, this Saturday, April 2nd, at the Crowfoot Ballroom in Pontiac, the RTA is holding an open house from 10:00 AM to 12:30 PM. So, anyone who's interested in Bus Rapid Transit can go to that event, see what a potential station might look like, where potential stops might be. So, it's a good event. I saw a preview of some of the videos of what Bus Rapid Transit might look like on Woodward or Grashit or Michigan Avenue. It's good to see what that potentially would look like. The video, I think, actually showed an accurate representation of Woodward. So, something that could happen in the future, but the meeting is this Saturday, so come out to that. And more information on that can be found on rta michigan.org. And then, secondly, here in Ferndale, we are continuing the conversation of the master plan and we had a great special planning commission meeting last month, so much so that we ran out of time, which often happens. So, we're going to hold another special planning commission meeting to talk all about the master plan, goals of the plan, and some of the more technical items that go with that.
Planner's dream.
Yes, exactly. I'll be smiling the whole time. So, Wednesday, April 6th, at 6:00 PM here in council chambers, we'll be meeting again, so, thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, Justin. Fire Chief Sullivan, anything from the fire department for the good of the community this evening?
Mr. Mayor, council, an interesting fact, methane is produced by the breakdown of biological materials and everyone experiences it personally, as we say, passing gas, so it is flammable, but in pockets that are trapped only. For your information.
Now I have that visual in my head.
You know, we are into prevention with the fire department, we have a prevention division and we kind of like to extend that into EMS. And I've noticed something, as Ferndale becomes a more walkable community, and we're putting in the bike lanes and that, I'm seeing people use these devices incorrectly. Joggers are running the wrong way in the bike lanes and anybody in the bike lanes, for whatever reason they're in them, should be traveling with the flow of traffic. And a person I look to all the time, Gordon Graham, is a person that owns Lexipol and we bought policies from them. He always says predictable is preventable. His background is in prevention of things occurring and if we can see things, on the way to the council meeting, a lady jaywalked with five small children and I stopped my vehicle, she made it across nine mile road rate by Rust Belt, but the littlest one was still in the westbound traffic lanes when a large truck rolled the corner and luckily the driver was completely paying attention and the small child was not mowed over by a very big truck. Don't believe the woman even knew her smallest child was in any kind of danger. But, again, we put in all these crosswalks, warning devices, and areas for the cars to know where people should cross and pedestrians should be yielded right away, but if you just walk out into traffic, you're taking your life in your own hands. And it isn't a matter of if it'll happen, it's only a matter of when it will happen. So, I would just like to caution everybody that we're developing a super walkable community. Please use the safety devices out there for your benefit. And it's for the driver's benefit too, because if anyone ever hit a child, it actually devastates the driver's life, whether they were at fault or not.
Yep.
Thank you.
Great reminder, Chief. Thank you. Karen, anything from a community engagement this evening? And congratulations on the new house.
Thank you.
Even if it's not in Ferndale.
Yes. Thank you. It belongs to my great aunt and it's got good bones. Yeah, I just have one item tonight and that is, I believe, two meetings ago, the council passed the, I'm not sure exactly what it was, but we're bringing Zipcar here to Ferndale. We're all very excited about that. So, I wanted to let everybody know that we're working to plan the official launch event for Zipcar. It's going to be in two weeks. It's actually going to be, let me see, Monday, April 11th at 5:30 PM, right before this meeting. It's going to be held in downtown Ferndale at 9:00 and Plannavon and Zipcar is going to be here, have a chance to meet the cars that are going to be living here in town. They're going to have a great tent set up with swag and people can get their registrations all signed up for so they can get going with Zipcar as soon as the program launches. And representatives will be there to answer all the questions. Of course, we'll be here too. We'll have a big ribbon cutting and it'll be a fun time. So, Zipcar is working to create a flyer for us, will be available so that we can distribute next week. Obviously, it'll also go out across social media and on our website, but we would encourage all of our residents to attend and learn about the program and learn about car sharing.
Very exciting. Thanks.
At that meeting, a couple of weeks ago, a user recommended that one of the vehicles be like a small SUV. Was that recommendation put forward to them?
Yes, Justin Lyons made that recommendation. I believe they accepted that too, right?
Yeah, I believe at least right now, one of the cars will be probably a Ford Focus-sized vehicle and the other car will be a small SUV-type vehicle, so some variety and, you know, we always reserve the right to, if those vehicles aren't working, we can swap out for other vehicles. They have a whole fleet, so...
Oh, good. So, we, I'm sorry, so we actually tell them what vehicles we would want there?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they made suggestions and their suggestions aligned with what we recommended too, so, yeah.
The vehicles, I just want to mention also, are meant to have names that are relevant to our city, so we're working with them to come up with a couple of fun names and those will be unveiled at the meeting as well.
Oh, dear.
Look forward to that.
I can only imagine.
If I may through the chair, Karen, I'd like to personally thank you for, on a holiday weekend, chiming in on some Facebook issues with regards to signs that went up prior to notification. And I was getting a lot of concerns directed my way and then you, on your days off and holiday, popped in and responded and did some education on Facebook. So, two things, one, thank you very much for being aware on your day off and watching that, but two, that kind of drives in the importance of having someone focusing on what you're focusing on to be able to respond during those times. So, I think it really was above and beyond. Before you, I think I would have just waited till Monday, but you got out there early, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. All right. DPW, we don't have Lloyd, but we're still in good hands.
We let him take a vacation.
Well, it happens.
Mr. Mayor and council, I have a couple of items to go over tonight. First off, I wanted to give you an update on the Hilton Road resurfacing project, which is from 8 to 9. As you're aware, the contractor started at the end of last fall and did some, they did the electrical work, which would be the removal of the traffic signal at University. The project was then put on hold through the winter season. This morning, we had a kickoff meeting prior to the spring start. At that meeting, it was discussed that they will be starting the construction up, starting next Monday. We have mailed notice, construction notices out to properties along Hilton Road as well as properties within 300 feet of Hilton Road to give them contact information, a lot of general information on the project. And then, myself and the construction inspector will be going door-to-door to the businesses along Hilton Road, make sure they got it, answer any questions they may have, and just exchange contact information and make sure they're in the loop on what's going on. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions on that.
I have questions about something different, but if you, you can continue.
I have, I have some questions, yeah, on the Hilton Road. So, with West Nine Mile Project and the East Nine Mile Projects, we had a really good process of communicating to residents via text or on cable of when the roads were going to be shut down, when they might be losing water or access to driveways, et cetera. Are we going to be able to communicate that same way? Are we using that same process?
We will be using pretty much the same process. The constructor, the construction inspector on the project, he will manage the day-to-day, you know, dealing with the businesses. I have a delivery coming in at 2:00 on Friday. Can you make sure that, you know, it's open, we can get in? He'll handle all the day-to-day stuff. We'll take and update council. We'll have bi-weekly construction meetings, progress meetings, keep council up to date and I'll be working with Karen to figure out what our best avenue might be as far as maybe putting something on the website just a quick, here's what happened the last two weeks, here's what we anticipate to happen over the next two weeks.
Okay. Because I know that people who live within the first block or so of Hilton kind of use Hilton as their main street, you know, they don't drive on Woodward, they generally use Hilton to travel up to Nine Mile to, you know, to kind of avoid Woodward. So, it's going to, it's going to impact them a lot with as many side streets as we have, you know, East Chesterfield, Channing, Silman, Jewel, all those streets, they're going to, those people are going to be really impacted even though they might not be living on Hilton. So, I just want to make sure that they're aware of when their street access might be closed for a week or two or...
Definitely. The actual closures themselves should be, I mean, the dead ends off of, that are off of Hilton Road, those will be open, they'll have access at all times. The others should be just temporary, short-term shutdowns, you know, where you can still get some traffic through, but not a complete shutdown for a long period of time.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks. And you, oh, yeah. But you have a second item.
Are you finishing?
This one's done. I can wait and answer this and then go into the other item.
I just wanted to know what was the update on the LED lights that were being installed throughout the city?
We have completed the LED lighting switch-over on the city-owned lights along Woodward. The goal is to continue with our LED conversions with our city-owned lights. The goal, which we are planning for and we're budgeting for, would be to upgrade parking lot lighting and exterior facility lighting like at City Hall and the Kulik Center, updating those this next fiscal year and then doing the remaining street lighting the following year, so in fiscal year 18.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
The next item I have is, it's April, starting next Monday, April 4th, yard waste will be, curbside, curbside yard waste will start getting collected. So, it'll be getting collected on the normal trash day, put it out, and they'll start taking it next week.
If I may put it out in a bag or something, right? You can't just leave it on the street?
That is correct. It has to be in either a paper sack or a container that has the yard waste label on it. And last but not least, April is bin blitz month, so all month of April, you can get bins, recycle bins at the DPW yard for $6 in lieu of the normal $10 rate. So, save yourself a little money and get yourself an extra bin.
Get a second one if you've lost one, but if you even want a second one, it could be very helpful, so.
I have four.
Yeah, four.
Wow.
And it's fresh.
And it's trash day tomorrow?
Pardon?
It's trash day tomorrow?
For your street.
For the street.
Yes.
What's your token? I just wanted to make sure, because people were asking, they got confused regarding the holiday.
Oh.
And...
We're on the reg...
Right, regular schedule. Okay, all right. Good to know.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Joe, anything from you this evening?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to what Councilman Martin had referred to. I do want to apologize, there was a glitch in the execution. As you know, we're implementing the RPZ program amongst the five RPZ streets. We thought we had our signage and our communications packet in sync. Unfortunately, due to an error, the signage got installed early, but positive of that is we have a lot of good public awareness of the program right now. And I've heard that Republic Parking is observing already a reduction in street traffic.
If I may through the chair, just a clarification question, because right after the question about the signs, I get the question of Republic Parking's on my street a lot, on streets that aren't in the RPZ today. Are they, do they kick in a patrol on those streets, and what are they enforcing?
No, let me clarify. Republic Parking is having a presence on the outer streets, because they're conducting traffic counts right now. It's learning about the impacts. So, right now, we're just measuring the impacts. We're doing the pre-counting before the program's actually implemented. But residents on these streets, you can count on seeing our faces. We'll be delivering communications about the new program door-to-door to each of the households within the district within the coming weeks.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Barb, anything for the clerk's office this evening?
I don't think so. We're just busy all the time.
All the time. All the time. April, anything for the city manager's office this evening?
All things budget right now. Just a funny reminder that on Saturday, starting at 9:00 here, we will have our budget workshop for the... Or wait, yeah, April 2nd.
April 2nd, yeah.
Right?
It's Saturday.
Did you say 8:00?
Eight, 9:00 a.m. April 2nd. You're all looking at me like very confused, so if that's not the case, let me know. It's 9:00. It's 9:00, 9:00 a.m. I did 8:00 one time, and I will never do that again. I apologize. So, just a funny reminder that that is our opportunity to go over the budget for the first time, and the public is welcome. And then, on April 11th, we will be setting the public hearing day, and on April 25th, we will be approving the budget. So, that is the timeline.
And that's here in council chambers?
Yes, we're here.
Thank you.
Thanks, April.
You're welcome.
Anything else from a legal perspective this evening?
Nothing tonight, Karen.
All right. Councilman Martin?
Nope, I have nothing tonight, other than to update my calendar, apparently, per circumstances.
Councilwoman Leaks May, anything?
I just want to remind everyone that the Ferndale Education Foundation Dinner is April 21st, 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the Magic Bag. Tickets are $50 for the dinner tickets, and raffle tickets are $10. And I also have to spend, send a special shout-out to my mom, because she turned 70 on Saturday. So, big 7-0, so happy birthday, Mom. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Paulica?
Just wanted to bring attention to a project. Many of us want to show some way our appreciation to veterans, and a lot of times, we don't know how to do that. There is actually a program called Green Light A Vet. If you go to www.greenviteavet.com, you can learn more about it. But basically, their request is to change one of your exterior lights on your home to a green light bulb that will show to people who are veterans that you support them as an individual. This project is not about war, anti-war, any of that. It's about showing your appreciation to veterans. You might not be able to meet them every day, but this shows veterans that you care as well. So, I just wanted to bring that to people's attention. Again, it's www.greenviteavet.com.
Very nice. Thank you. Mayor Protem Piana?
Yeah, just an announcement that the Citizens Fair Ferndale Good Neighbors Award is April 19th. I also call this the cry... What?
Go ahead. It's invite-only.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, always has been.
Really?
Yeah.
I thought it was always...
You always get invited.
Oh. Well, my bad. Scratch that.
They can afford to feed the masses.
Sorry, I don't mean to step on you.
No, I always just donate it. I just made that assumption. Sorry.
I'm on the committee, and usually, unless they've changed something, I didn't mention it.
Sorry. My bad. On to the Michigan Municipal League. Raylon Leaks, or Councilwoman Raylon Leaks May, and I went up to the MML Conference last week, and April joined us on the third, on the second day. And just wanted to let you know, if you haven't heard, they've launched a pretty major education campaign called Municipal Finance Reform. And you can go to savemycity.org, save-m-i-city.org, to learn about the disinvestment in the revenue-sharing funds diverted away from communities that total 7.5 billion since 2002 to 2012. Their goal is not to sort of try to rework revenue-sharing. Their interest is to have a different conversation about how do we fund sustained, healthy communities by funding local government for essential services. And I think it's a really important initiative for the city of Ferndale to get behind, because we have been impacted by the state's choices not to fund revenue-sharing up to the full max as agreed upon in law. And this has been going on through three different terms of government leaders for a while. So, I also had a chance to meet with some state reps and senators and advocate for Ferndale's position on a couple of things. So, my, I think my position on the MML trustee board has been beneficial so far. And please let me know if you have any questions about what I could take or liaison for you on Ferndale's behalf. On top of that, you've already heard about the Regional Transit Authority's master plan public meetings, and perhaps you've seen the commercials for the campaign coming out of the Detroit Regional Chamber Foundation. And it's called, the campaign is starting, and it's called a Coalition for Transit, called ACT. And they have a form where individuals and organizations can sign on there for their support. And I made sure that the city of Ferndale, if we so choose, I'll send it around, you guys, we can discuss at a later time. But we would not be hamstrung by the Public Act 269 gag rule. There was a big question up at the MML Conference about what that can do, what that is doing to communities, and if there's a chance of that returning in some other form. Basically, they have said that if, you just have to say that public funds are being used for a campaign, and if you wanted to support a campaign, you can't use public funds to do it. Does that make sense? Did I say that right, April?
I don't know.